We're getting there, close. It's ready to meet. That's the dudiest thing.
Always gets me.
You gonna call this meeting to order? This is the Morgantown City Council regular meeting. We're in the Mon County Commission Chambers, 243 High Street, second floor. It's Tuesday, September 6th, 2022, and it's a little bit after 7:00 PM. And if the clerk would please call the roll.
Ms. Joe Buganam?
President.
Bill Kueckie?
Here.
Ixtea Vega?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshbarger?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Celine?
Here.
Now, we're gonna recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Now, we're gonna go through some sets of minutes. We have the August 16th, 2022 minutes, of regular meeting minutes, the August 30th, 2022 special meeting minutes, and the August 30th, 2022 Committee of the Whole meeting minutes. And if there are any corrections or additions, please be sure to let the clerk know. And if everyone who's in favor, just kind of put their hand up for this one. Thank you very much.
If I may, I don't believe the Committee of the Whole minutes were sent.
Were they sent later in the day, or was that a different set?
Did Heather send them?
Someone wanted to check their, I think, that the Committee of the Whole came...
This afternoon?
This afternoon.
Yeah, alright, my apologies.
No, I appreciate if we're approving minutes and people haven't had access to. It'd be good to know that. But I think, yeah, did somebody see those this afternoon?
I didn't see the 30th, I saw the 16th.
Then, would you all like to take up the 30th at our, the Committee of the Whole minutes at our next meeting? If people haven't had a chance to see them?
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, so we will put those on the next, next agenda. If you have not gotten a chance to see them. And now, we are to, so I guess we'll just have another little show of hands for just the first two sets of minutes. Alright, thank you. And then, correspondence. Just gonna ask the clerk if there's any correspondence. And then, we have public hearing. Item A, an ordinance authorizing lease agreement with EAN Holdings LLC at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. And we're gonna, so this is a, this is a public hearing just about this lease. This is not the public portion. And so, we're gonna... Oh, do you mind if I move that? Is this better? I'll move my paperwork this way, so I'm facing the right direction. I don't hear well, so if somebody doesn't hear, I would like to know about it. Thank you. So, this is a public hearing about an ordinance authorizing lease agreement with EAN Holdings LLC at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. We're gonna open this public hearing. It's just on this one topic. And if anyone is wishing to speak, they would come to the microphone. Then, we're gonna close this public hearing. If there's no one wishing to speak. And now, we're on unfinished business, boards and commissions. We didn't, we didn't work on boards and commissions. Guess we might have had one. We'll wait and do that next time, because we didn't have, we did something with legislature instead of legislators, instead of that. Now, we're to the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. And that would be that people would have three minutes to speak, and they would state their name and their address, and so they could come to the podium. And we have a list here, but people who are not on the list are welcome to come after the first two people have spoken and speak. So, it starts with Todd Stenbrook. Well, we can give him another opportunity in a couple of minutes. How about Deborah Gorday? If you know, if you know who she is.
It's three or four minutes. It says four.
Pardon?
Four, right? Four minutes to speak.
Okay. What is it usually from our city attorneys? Usually four or three? Four? Can't remember.
The timer always says four minutes.
Yeah, the timer says four.
Alright, four minutes. We're good.
Yep.
Of course, my voice tends to carry some. Most people, I don't really need a microphone. First of all, I think...
What that timer gives you, that's what you got, and it's four minutes, apparently.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I actually was waiting for Todd to speak first, because I wanna reiterate, I think, I think, a couple of things he's gonna talk about. And one of them is the city manager not living inside the city. I can't believe his council is not aware of that, and has not been aware of that for two years. For the fact is, it is your job and your responsibility. He works for council, okay? So, it's your job and responsibility to make sure he's following the law, which is, the city charter requires that while you're in office, that you live inside the city of Morgantown. So, the buck stops at your doorstep. Especially you, mayor, because you are the mayor. So, you're in charge of basically city council. And he's been violating the city charter for two years. His address is supposed to be public knowledge. And if you call City Hall, they will give you City Hall's address. Not his, where he's supposed to be living in Morgantown, because he doesn't live in Morgantown. And I know, because I have followed the city manager on more than one occasion. So, I know he doesn't live inside the city. Mr. Caputo brought up collective bargaining. And I believe we, the police department tried an initiative of collective bargaining several years ago, which failed at the voters, okay? They might wanna try that again, because he is right. Police and fire, they are unions. They might not be recognized as unions, but they are unions. And I would come upon city councils to sit down with them and try to rectify some of these issues. I know you say you've been working on them, but still, you know, there are some issues that still need to be rectified. The next issue I'd like to talk about is Chief Powell. Chief Powell, I believe, is misleading city council on the issue of minimum manning. Minimum manning is what that is, is that five officers have to be on patrol every day for safety reasons. And that is mandated by the law enforcement standards federally. Morgantown, it is five. Now, whether that is a supervisor and four officers, or two supervisors and three officers, it's five. And it's been five for 36 years. You know, I don't believe Chief Preston changed that, and I know Chief Powell didn't change it. So, and I do know, and I have information, that in July this year, there were 10 days that day shift worked below minimum manning, which would be below five officers. I also know that day shift worked seven days below minimum manning in July. Okay? So, again, you talk about a lawsuit. It won't be a $10 million lawsuit. You're talking about a multimillion dollar lawsuit. If an officer gets seriously hurt or killed out here because there's not minimum manning. And the reason there's not minimum manning is because nobody wants to apply, because you've taken away the benefits. Yes, it's a national problem. But these other national cities are not taking away benefits, okay? Now, he said that there's 59 officers, counting the four new ones. Okay, you can't really count them on patrol, because they have to go to the academy. You're looking for a whole year before they're out on the street. So, that knocks it down to 55 officers. Between now and then January, there will be five retiring, which puts it down to 50 officers for the Morgantown Police Department, which is what it was 15 years ago whenever I retired, okay?
Yep, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, we're gonna circle back and ask Todd Stenbrook if you would like to speak.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a little blunt when it comes to what I have to say. And the arrogance of the city council is just beyond me. You've had a man for two years, living out of the city limits, working as your city manager. You have an assistant city manager that lives out of the city limits. It is your responsibility to make sure you follow charter. This man is under your responsibility. What is he even doing sitting in that chair right now? Because I guarantee you, if an officer did something wrong, not only would you guys be on his butt, but your civilian review board would be on his butt as well, and he wouldn't be working. This man should not be sitting here. He doesn't live here. He can't do anything if there's an emergency here. He's not here. The man is supposed to be in the city limits, per charter, for a reason. And his backup isn't even at city limits. The arrogance of you guys, that it's okay, that you break the law, and every citizen that lives in the community may not. And your charter is pretty specific about it. So, why is this happening? What investigation is it that you're gonna do? The man lives outside the city limits. What is there to investigate? What? And I'd like feedback. And I know I can ask for feedback, and you guys can give me feedback if you choose to. So, I'm asking for feedback. What type of investigation are you gonna do? Nothing? Birds chirping? Do you live in the city limits?
We're, we're not able to answer you at this time?
You actually are able to answer me if you choose to.
We're not...
You don't care what the rules are? You don't care what the law is? So, I'm asking you, you sir, not council, you sir, do you live in city limits?
Pardon, he's not gonna answer.
Bottom line is, the buck stops not only with you all, but the buck stops with your, your buck stops with the city attorney as well.
You asked a question. We can answer you during, when we each have our individual times at the end of the meeting, just so, just for your information.
My phone number's out there, you're welcome to give me a call. When you guys don't do anything about the fact that you're breaking the law, and the city manager is breaking the law, it falls back to your city attorney. You're called the city attorney, which is a little bit of a faux pas. You're the people, people's attorney, the citizens of Morgantown. That's who you're an attorney for. Your job is to make sure that they follow the law. Since they haven't followed the law, your job is to either ask them to resign or recall them. Period. They've broken the law for two years now. How much longer is it gonna go? I stopped by your office, I spoke to your assistant, and I asked you to call me. You haven't. And what have you guys done to your city management? Every department. Nobody will speak. Powell came up here and gave you guys a BS story about how everything is in the police department, when you know better, and you guys thanked him. He only did that because he's worried about his retirement. Why should he be worried about his retirement? What retaliation would there be? Why should there be a retaliation for someone speaking the truth? You guys don't wanna hear that truth.
Thank you for coming to speak. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. We're gonna close the public portion. And now, we're down to special committee reports, and we don't have a special committee report today. And now, we're down to the consent agenda. Consideration of approval of second reading of an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with EAN Holdings LLC at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. And then, item B, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing application for the Governor's Highway Safety Program grant. Item C, consideration of approval of a resolution approving agreement with the Montgalea County Board of Education, providing a school resource officer for Morgantown High School. Item D, consideration of approval of a resolution approving agreement with Montgalea County Board of Education, providing a prevention resource officer for Suncrest Middle School. And so, all of these items are up at one time. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent agendas presented.
Second.
Thank you. And then, if the clerk would please call the roll.
Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Ixtea Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Now, we're on to new business. Item A, consideration of approval of a resolution amending the fiscal year 2022-2023 revised budget revision 01 for the Capital Escrow Fund. And as the city manager.
Thank you, mayor. The police department is, is, is making the recommendation that council, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I skipped, I skipped. I'm so sorry. This ordinance would allow the city manager to, to execute, you saw an attached off-airport concession lease agreement. You should've had an opportunity to read that and review that, with EAN Holdings LLC operating Enterprise Rent-A-Car, Animal Rent-A-Car, and National Car Rental for services and use of space at the Morgantown Airport.
Mayor Hoss?
I think we're talking about the Capital Escrow Fund at this point, under new business, and I don't know where the lease... Sorry about that.
Let me, well, let me see what date is on this.
Yes, so it's item... Yeah, it's item 11, and it's item A under item 11.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, that's an easy one.
Yeah, we just, we just need to pull him up here.
Good evening, council. This is budget revision number one for the Capital Escrow Fund. There's two parts to this revision. The first part is carryover from 2022. The Capital Escrow acts like a savings account. So, department heads will budget for their five-year plans and accumulate in this fund. And also, there was some excess in the BNO construction that gets transferred over to Capital Escrow to fund projects and equipment purchases. So, all of this carryover and excess is the first part of this. And then, the second part is the general fund revision that was approved last month. Part of that general fund revision sends some money over to Capital Escrow for specifically Bow Park and a vehicle lease for arts and culture. The total amount of the carryover is $10,199,685, and the general fund revision is $549,092. And this will make the total Capital Escrow budget for 2022-2023 Just some significant amounts and noteworthy amounts, suggesting to add $215,000 to legal, just for us, some extra contingency. There's $180,000 in engineering for a Mon County Development Authority agreement for the Richwood area improvement that was not originally budgeted. We added $243,000 to City Hall for potential overages in the projects, bond projects. Excuse me. There was $425,000 carryover into Woodburn. This is mainly for HVAC and roof replacement. There was $67,000 carried over in police, specifically earmarked for equipment that was funded from the municipal service fee. Streets is the biggest carryover, and the majority of that is also from the municipal service fee for right-of-way improvements and equipment. 2.2 million in airport carryover. Those amounts have been, majority of it, has been designated for runway extension. $908,000 for Bow Park. That will consist of $143,000 carryover and $765,000 for their 2023 capital request. So, we are going to be able to fully fund Bow Park. $287,000 in arts and culture. Majority of that is for HVAC replacement. We did have to add $126,000, was previously unbudgeted, based upon the most recent quote that came in for that project. $92,000 for urban landscaping, and that will be a new building for them. And then, finally, add $761,500 to the general contingency to bring that up to an even $1 million for the '23 budget. Any questions or any more details I can provide?
It's a lot of good projects.
Did I see something about a truck for arts and culture?
Yes, they are leasing a truck from Enterprise. I believe about $9,200 will be the cost of that per year, plus fuel and some property taxes.
Any other questions?
Is there a motion while we're, yes, while we're thinking about this?
For the budget revision?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any more questions about specific items within this?
I am curious about the truck for arts and culture.
Well, you have to move things around, let me tell you. I've watched them.
Why is that not handled with Public Works?
There's certain activities that the Arts and Culture Department does on a daily basis. They now have a facilities and grounds crew technician who does all the bathroom cleaning, not only for the Met, the amphitheater, they do some of the work at the museum. But the biggest reason for the truck specifically was with the new video wall that was acquired, that comes on a trailer. To move that, we've had the opportunity to set that up and practice building it and taking it down and things like that. So, we'll be able to do movies in the park, similar to what Bow Park has been able to do. But we'll be able to do that when it is actually right outside. Also, if you wanted to play a movie in the middle of the day, as opposed to in the summer, waiting until 9:00 at night, to be able to start those movies, it just is like a very big TV screen. But it's just for a lot of the moving of equipment around some of the, I think they call them like bicycle racks and things like that, to set up around the stage and stuff, some of the events. It just helps, being able to move some of that stuff that are...
I don't, I don't disagree with that. And certainly, I look forward to those activities and also to that capability. I'm concerned, what I'm hearing implied perhaps is an increased personnel allotment growth in an area that I hadn't necessarily expected. I would've thought that that would've been more within Public Works, like I said, and cooperation between the two, as opposed to a standalone or designated group that would handle a specific area.
The bulk of their time that they work is opposite, so Public Works is primarily, you know, weekday daylight, whereas a lot of the events that happen in the Arts and Cultural Department are evenings and weekends, which is definitely an aspect of that. And we do rely on Public Works for some of the work, more heavy work that is done. And once we hit wintertime, nearly every one of the Public Works vehicles has switched over to winter operations, so they have the hopper that goes for salt and the foul on the front of the trucks, because we don't do those with... Well, we do do those with some of our larger equipment, but since some of our streets, especially neighborhood streets, are very narrow, all of our smaller work trucks, which I'm not a truck person, so I couldn't tell you exactly what truck that is. But some of those smaller vehicles do get switched over for winter equipment, or winter operations as well. And then, that would prohibit being able to put the trailer and some of that other equipment inside of that truck.
Thank you for the explanation.
Any other questions or... Alright, we've had a motion. If the clerk would please call the roll?
Yes. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Ixtea Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Item B, consideration of approval of a resolution endorsing Vision Zero for Montgalea County and the Morgantown area to achieve zero traffic deaths on local streets.
I think I have this one. The resolution that you are looking at right now would endorse the Vision Zero program, goal of eliminating deaths and serious injuries on city streets with an emphasis on the more vulnerable of our citizens. The resolution provides for the city of Morgantown to work with the MMPO to achieve the Vision Zero goals and for city departments to support implementation of the Vision Zero plan.
This is probably part of the larger grant. I think the education program for that? I'm not sure.
It's not, I'm not aware of it, being a grant.
Yeah, but this is...
It's an MMPO grant, and I think it's just our support of it.
This is great. Does anyone have a motion to offer?
Move to accept.
Second.
Thank you. And then, are there any questions or comments on this one? Alright, if the clerk would call the roll?
Yes, Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Ixtea Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Consideration of approval of purchasing a new HVAC system at the Metropolitan Theater.
This has been discussed for quite a while now. It's been needed in order to properly allow that facility to be functional and to function properly. Bids were opened on August 17th at 2:00 for this replacement of the HVAC system at the Met Theater. The bid is part of the planned renovation program that the, that the Capital Fund has funded for this year and includes replacement of the entire system. It also includes, just for council's information, a $75,000 grant from the West Virginia Commission on the Arts to help offset some of the costs. There were two contractors that bid on, on the project, CP&amp;H. Between the base bid and the alternates, alternates one and two, their, their cost came in at $524,800. Ader Incorporated, if you take the base bid and the two alternates, came in at $535,550. And therefore, it's, it's our recommendation, it's staff's recommendation, that the bid be awarded to CP&amp;H in the amount of $524,800.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Sir, second?
Second.
Thank you. And then, are there any questions about this system?
What's the timeline for installation?
I, I know that they usually have a mobilization of thirty to sixty days. When, when are they hoping, I, I'm assuming this is a winter job, because it's, do you know, Emily?
I don't know, can't. We can definitely find out when we can.
We're hoping it's in place, I, I do know this, it, it should be in place for the, the spring, spring part of the season.
I just know that fall and winter tends to be a busy time at the Met, so...
Yep, we're hoping that it's in place soon.
Great. Call the roll?
Joe Bugonam?
Yeah.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Ixtea Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously, moving on to consideration of approval of an agreement for public recreation at Plegal Reservoir. This has been a long time coming, so...
I'll tell you...
City manager!
Yes, a lot of work on council's part as well as staff part has gone into this, this project. Really, the concern all along for, for both, for Bow Park, for, for the city and for MUB has been that how do we provide recreational services at that facility and maintain the water quality and make sure that we're not infringing on, encroaching on the real intent of that reservoir, which is to provide a, a drinking water source, resource for, for the city. And so, there's been a lot of going back and forth and, and we had a meeting with members of the board and the general manager of MUB this last week, along with Mel at, at the, at Bow Park and several council members and, and staff and attorneys. We all sat down and it, what, a half hour? I mean, I mean, it was, it was, I think we've, we've worked out the details that, that are amenable to both sides. I think that Bow Park, uh, Bow Park is, is pleased that, with, with their ability to be able, be able to go in and, and develop recreational resources. I, I think that Bow Park is pleased and happy with the fact that their water source, as well as safety at the, at the dam, that was, that was a big dam safety and making sure that there was some limitation in terms of access. All of those were taken into account in the, in the proposed agreement and, and I think the city is protected in that process, our city. Attorney has certainly been very careful to make sure that the city is protected through this process. So, it's, I believe it's a unanimous agreement that council consider this, this agreement at this point in time so we can move forward with the project.
Is there a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hard to even know what to say. It's just fabulous day. Is there any discussion or questions? I know that in particular people, some of the fishermen have been asking about this and, and I think, was it the DNR that contacted us about the possibility of stocking? So that's in there. So there's a little bit of, of something, something for everyone, that there'll be places to walk, bike, fishing, should be boat access and a bathroom. So, that's a pretty, not every day that a community gets both a water source and a place to recreate through the same expenditure of money. That's, that's good governance, I would say, to make use of that, so...
Awesome.
It's wonderful if we can get everybody working together.
I know that it's been said that the city and MUB like to spend their time bickering back and forth, but to the city manager's point, we got in the same room together and within twenty to thirty minutes, it was ironed out, we were all in agreement, and then we moved on to discussing other projects that we are working on together. So I think it's a good, a good sign of relationships to come.
Yes. So, we've had a motion. Now, if, unless anybody else has anything else they wanted to say, we are on to asking the clerk to call the roll.
Joe Bugonam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Ixtea Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Consideration of approval of vacant structure exemption request for 2100 Lastravia Avenue. And, probably not pronouncing that correctly. And I imagine this is an item that we're supposed to potentially be moving it to a meeting at a later date, but the manager can let us know that.
I, I, I believe that that's, that's the case, as, as was the case with the last two previous ones that were recently had by council.
To take care of all of them, same...
Yes.
So, is there anyone willing to make a motion that we move this item to a meeting at a later date?
I'll make the motion, but hold this for another, another meeting.
Second.
Thank you, and then, is there, are there any other comments or questions? Then we'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Joe Bugonam?
Yeah.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Ixtea Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously, and now we are on to the most important part of our meeting this evening, is the consideration of approval to set the date and time for trick-or-treat.
This is probably the most difficult one of all.
It is. Kids are wanting to know.
Exactly. Trick-or-treat, October thirty-first falls on a Monday night, and so council needs to determine when trick-or-treating will be observed.
So, usually we do that on the thirty-first, we can certainly discuss that, and I'm trying to remember the timing. Is it, is it last year, six to eight, or what was it?
I think it was six to eight.
Mayor, it was six to eight last year.
What was it?
Six to eight.
You would remember, because you do a lot of things in your neighborhood with trick-or-treat.
My favorite holiday.
I imagine it is. That's excellent. So is there anyone wishing to make a motion?
Move to set trick-or-treat within the city limits of Morgantown on Monday, October thirty-first from six to eight PM?
Second.
There we go. Is there any other comments, questions?
I don't want little kids coming after us.
Well, it used to be that it was like one hour, and then we had people coming after us for sure, more parents than little kids, but they, they wanted a little more time, so... So six to eight it's been for a while. So, if you would call the roll on this very important item, which is very important.
Yes. Joe Bugonam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Ixtea Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Now we know when our spooky time is. Now it's the city manager's report, thank you very much.
I, I have one, one important item to, to review with, with council. It's a, it's a couple, well, maybe two months late, but we intend at the next committee of the whole to present a three-year sidewalk improvement plan.
Yes.
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 Appreciate that. A sidewalk improvement plan that would include not only replacement of sidewalks or construction of new sidewalks, but also discuss handicap accessibility and, and crossing. We've been able to do that internally and, and feel that the, the, the presentation at the committee of the whole later in September is going to be really a, a good presentation and, and council will, will have plenty of opportunity for input in terms of timing and priorities. That's all I have.
That's a big one.
Was that October or September?
I thought it's September, but it's October.
I thought we talked about October.
Oh, okay, it's Oc, we're moving it back a month.
I would like to retract my enthusiastic fist bump.
Maybe one or...
I would like to, I would like to, I would just like to see one in my lifetime.
It's coming, so we're excited about it.
If it's coming next month and it's slightly higher and more detail, higher quality and more detailed...
Right, the quality will be greater.
We're good.
Your Halloween tree.
Wow, yeah, what happens when Halloween falls on a Tuesday? Anyway, we will deal with that next year. So, now we are on to the city clerk's report.
Yes, Mayor, I want to give a quick update on Municipal Government Week. So we've been working with some folks to try to plan some things to honor that week. Been working with Councilor Bugonam to do a mock city council meeting with some students from Morgantown High, and he has already been collaborating with the teachers, and so we're looking forward to doing that and hopefully getting you all here to watch. So, more news on that as we get a little closer.
Can you remind us the dates of the week?
It is the week of seventeen through the twentieth, October. And we have a meeting on that Tuesday, on October eighteenth. We will also be working with Eastwood Elementary to do a If I Were Mayor letter again. I know that you used to do that years ago, so we're going to do that, and we have already planned to pick that up on October eleventh so that we can get those letters to you, Mayor Celine, prior to our meeting on the eighteenth. So we're excited about that. Still working to plan other events, such as a read aloud at the library, perhaps some sort of open house type event with council and some other things, but just wanted to give you a quick update on what's going on, so if you have other ideas, please reach out to me. And that's it for my report.
Great. And to reiterate, if anyone here does have a specific idea that you'd like to work on with the clerk, please do not hesitate. So it's a great opportunity to highlight municipal government. And now we are to the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. The State Bar is having its regional meeting in Morgantown this Thursday. In all of town, the State Bar has these meetings in, in each of the regions each year to provide an update on the, the state of the bar and try to work collaboratively with lawyers practicing in the region. They often have Supreme Court justices and local circuit court judges attend. We may have judges from the new intermediate appellate court this year. They are, the Supreme Court is really working on updates to our rules of civil procedure and have just adopted and begun implementing rules for the intermediate appellate court. So, all the, the most exciting things for you all, I'm sure, but be attending that. I also recently met with the city engineer, Anne Akom, who's our design engineer for the Walnut Street, Streetscape, to talk a bit about their, their work on the sidewalks and the vaults underlying some areas of the sidewalks that are joining the properties. They are continuing to work on the design needed to either retain those vaults in, in places where it's appropriate and, and property owners want to keep operating them or to ensure the sidewalk is safe for the kinds of loads it may encounter from traffic and their right-of-way agent is reaching out to property owners to, to address those issues and make sure we have the proper discussion with them and, and agreements in place as that project move forward. So, a brief update on that, although I know those projects move slowly. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Now we have a report from city council members, and I don't know whether we need to have a Counselor Butcher start or Counselor Bugonam start, or either of you have a preference. All right.
Did I just get volunteered?
You're in there. You get to start, if you would like to.
Sure. I guess since, I will acknowledge Counselor Butcher in my report.
Perfect.
And say, well done, I got to visit the Morgantown Pride, Morgantown Pride Block Party that he helped organize along with Morgantown Pride and our own Ash Orr, and I cannot begin to express how lively and wonderful everything was, and I'd say kudos to him and fantastic job. My family enjoyed going and seeing all the vendors as well. I also am a bit jealous that I saw a photograph of two people here that got to utilize the new Morgantown kayak facility. I've been working on my kayaking skills during COVID, so I was prepared for launch, needless to say, I...
Well, we'll have to invite you the next time.
Thank you, that's what I'm trying to imply.
Soon, so that those skills don't get stale.
Yes, and before it gets cold. And I was going to also ask for an update on sidewalk plan, but I was beat to that by city manager Haas, so I'm really just falling behind this week. Everyone seems to be running between the kayak launch and sidewalk improvement plan. And then lastly, I did want to say thank you to the delegates for visiting us prior to our meeting this evening and discussing all the things happening in and around our city. That is my report.
Thank you very much. That's a quick...
No, thank you. I wasn't sure, maybe you were going to call Counselor Butcher?
No, we're not, we're not, we're not playing that, we're just, we're, this is a straight-around group.
Oh, very good. I was very gratified in seeing that, that our legislators turned out for a discussion. I was very pleased with the, the way the, the conversation was conducted, and I think it was very fruitful. In terms of my disappointment with the ongoing publicity that we're hearing in the attempt to negotiate via the media, what we have are a bunch of people who are complaining that seem to be serving their own political or personal agenda, and they're not offering a solution to any of the problems, they're simply wanting to tear everything apart and not looking at the accomplishments of this council and, and the quality that we've managed to obtain over these past years. We are, in fact, I think, a city that's worth some consideration. And I would hope that our constituents look at what has been done and not simply react to what is the salacious gossip that is being presented. We are concerned with our community, we are working towards our community, we do respect our police department, we do respect our fire department, as we do all our employees, as we have demonstrated in the past, and we will continue to do so, regardless of these frivolous accusations. Totally report is it, it's more a complaint, but I'm at that point in my career that I think it needs to be heard, and I'll damn well say it. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, Ixtea Vega, what do you have tonight?
Thanks. Latinaki's Heritage Month starts September fifteenth, so I just want to take a moment to share and celebrate the accomplishments of our people. We feed this country by picking the food that we eat. We had our first Mexican-American astronaut go into space this year named Katia Echazarette, Ze, Zarreta, oh my gosh, apologies, Katia. This year, Latina specifically, Juan... This year, Latina specifically, who in role in universities are going at a higher rate than ever before. And not that it matters, but we contribute two hundred and fifty-two billion dollars in taxes to this country. We contribute to politics, organizing, economy, music, university, sports, et cetera, and we're here to stay. Also want to note the appreciation that I have for our city that has taken the steps to be more inclusive to Spanish-speaking communities and Latino communities in our city. And I can't wait to see what the future will bring with that. On another note, speaking of conversations that we've had with our state representatives, we had a conversation about Amendment Two. Amendment Two would take away important funding from our counties, impacting us all. And there will be a postcard party this Sunday at White Park Shelter at five thirty PM to take action. Amendment Two and Amendment Four are a blatant power grab that would see local decisions making exported to the state legislature. Everything from critical funding for our schools, local libraries and public safety to keep politics out of our kids' classrooms is a stake. It's important that we reach out to folks in our state and let them know this amendment would impact our city and our county in an enormous way. On another note, on the twentieth, Boe Park hosted a great concert in the Wiles Hill Community Center. I wasn't able to attend because of work, but I heard from several community members that they were very excited to just be able to stop by after their long day and enjoy some music. So thank you and shout out to Boe Park. And on another note, I just want to reiterate the fact that there are more conversations that folks are not seeing and are not a part of. And I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor? I'm not going to usurp your spot next, or the person after me's spot this time.
You just want to go last. You don't want-
I'm going last. Then I don't duplicate.
I will start off by saying that the Woodburn Association of Neighbors is having our block party this this Sunday, September eleventh, from three to six PM. That will be on the six hundred block of Louise Avenue. We did get approval to shut that portion of street down. That's between Dayton and East Prospect, really close to Mario's, one street up from Richwood, so, or two street, yeah. But we are also, the Woodburn Association of Neighbors is having our every other month cleanup of Wood, Whitmore Park and our Adopt a Street cleanup for Charles and Richwood avenues. That will be on Saturday, September seventeenth at ten AM. That's a football game day and I intend to go to that football game. So if everyone comes out at ten AM to the parking lot behind Mario's, we can get it done really fast and everyone can go tailgate. Sounds great. I came prepared, well, this afternoon I had prepared to write a statement and then I chose not to and decided based on some information that I received very close to the time of our legislature meeting, that I did not have time to go over, that I would not be speaking to anything this evening. But now, based on our meeting with the legislature and some public comment and some other councillor comments, I'm going to go despite not having written anything. So we all know how this usually goes from my time speaking during public portions when I was just a, an observer. We are well aware, I am well aware, of discontent among many of our city employees. And I have been willing and able to listen to any employee who has contacted me. I have spoken personally with firefighters and with groups of firefighters. I have spoken personally with police officers and with groups of police officers. If someone calls me and reaches out and says I have concerns, I have always been willing to listen. As most people on this half of the room can tell you, I don't just listen. I take those concerns and I take them into executive session discussions and I take them into private meetings in the city manager's office or in the city attorney's office. There are those among us who are not complacent with some of the changes that are being made. We are asking for numbers, which we've been asking for, in my opinion, for weeks, months. And I was receiving up until four forty-five this afternoon, new numbers, so I haven't had time to go over those. I have asked, several of us have asked for the meeting that was requested this evening. We have asked to meet between council and the city manager and the chief of police and the fire chief. And those meetings have not been set up. And time and time again, I have been told, these are not functions of council, these are personnel matters that are functions of the city manager's office. Despite that, I have continued to push forward in asking for answers and for changes and any number of responses that I feel would be appropriate, but those are continually, I feel just were kicking the can down the road. So I wanted people in the public to know that just because I have been asked not to speak about this publicly does not mean that I am not trying to address it privately and despite a vote of no confidence from employees, I will continue to advocate on their behalf. Next.
Thank you. Councilor Hershberger?
And thank everybody for well, well said words and I think needed words to be said. I won't repeat them, but I do appreciate the words that have been spoken so far. I think it's great our kayak facility is now open. That is just a wonderful resource to continue to attract people to our waterfront. Just a quick update on our rail trail system. The Suncrest Connector, which will take Collins Ferry down to the rail trail, is going out to bid in the next couple of weeks with the goal of hiring a contractor by the end of October. And then that work can begin within thirty to sixty days following that, or sooner. So that, that piece of trail, trail connection will exist very soon. And it was wonderful to have our legislatures here. I thought that was a great meeting, very productive, so I want to thank them for attending. And lastly, not to compete with the Woodburn Block Party, but South Hills is also having one from four to seven thirty, so you could potentially still do both.
We're close by.
We're close by. So thank, that's all I have, Mayor.
My turn? I wanted to thank Councilor Hershberger for quickly getting back to me about the Collins Ferry Connector and then getting me a meeting link so I could listen in on that. It was my first time on one of those meetings, but and Ella got me an agenda as well, so that was, that was nice.
Good.
And, you know, thank, thank you to all. I think I saw Bill and, well, Ixie was there running a table at Morgantown Pride. And I think I saw Bill there briefly. I was running around, so, and Joe, and I know people are busy, but thank you for coming to the block party. I am a member of the board, so I guess I selfishly advertise sometimes, but yeah, we did really well and it was really well attended. It's our largest fundraising event of the year and it's, this was the best year we've ever had. So I appreciate all the vendors and everybody that made it a fun event and safe. Anyway, I wanted to share some of my concerns with what has been spoken about tonight and how I feel frustrated and almost like I have little option or little recourse to get a message and forward motion on things that we've been frustrated about at this point in terms of with the police and the firefighters and our city's pay plan. So I've just been pretty, I mean, as, you know, like, like the deputy mayor said, most people on this side can attest to, pretty frustrated with how this entire process has been rolled out. And my, I guess my bottom line has always been that I want to see, I want to see numbers that can tell me that my, that our city staff can take care of their families and that they can provide for their families and that they're making more money than they were last year. I don't, you know, I don't want to speak to to, to the rules that we may have imposed because I think those are necessary. But at the end of the day, we should be, we should have paychecks that reflect what allows quality of life for our city's employees. And most especially our first responders who are putting their lives on the line for us. I feel like I've spent months in private meetings with council and staff for further information on these issues. I feel that we've not been given the information required to make proper decisions and it makes us look frankly silly when we try to speak to our constituents. You know, I share a great deal of the frustrations I've heard tonight from delegates and from members of the public. We've called for meetings with city staff and as the deputy mayor has alluded to, and we have not got one. And I just want to be able to talk to like one of our firefighters who's sitting back here in a more formal setting and ask him how his daily life feels now, how his kids feel now. And, and what it's, what kind of effect it's had on him and his families. So, yeah, just this evening we received specific numbers on pay and we've been asking for those documents for quite some time and I appreciate that we have them now. But I feel that our communication with our rank and file employees is not what it should be. Wherever that feeling is, it ultimately falls back on us. And we, I, I want to apologize to our city staff for our feelings in that regard. And we, I definitely want us to try to work better. But I'm just tired of waiting for improvements and a resolution that never seems to come for this situation as it continues to spiral out of control. Now, I also wanted to specifically address some comments made by the public. First of all, the idea of retaliation from the Police Review Board. I would just encourage members of the public to look up information about the Police Review Board and understand that a settlement was reached with the FOP's cooperation and that no one, that board is not able to enforce on officers, nor could it have retaliation against the chief of police for anything that they do. I also wanted to really quickly comment on a comment made about following the city manager. I find that highly disturbing. He's a public employee that works for the city and stalking him because you think that he shouldn't be working, no matter how much you might disagree with him, I find unacceptable and disturbing. And I would encourage people who might disagree with anything that we might do to understand that there are human beings sitting in these seats and with families and that stalking them is unacceptable. And I'd also encourage the city manager to take additional security measures in the face of that. That, that'll conclude my comments for tonight.
Wow. Saved yourself for last. Good job.
Lots of, lots of, lots of meaty, interesting perspectives and discussion and appreciate every single individual and unique comment here because they all, they all kind of, kind of blend and merge into one. I'm, even if we differ, just to have those different perspectives to work from, it's very helpful. On September eighth, this Thursday, from five to seven, there's a comprehensive plan fair at Mountaineer Station. And that should be an excellent opportunity for anyone interested in having an impact on the overall comprehensive plan. So it'll be elements, I think, from like the county plan and the city plan and the MMPO plan. Like it's, it's, it's an opportunity for people to have input into, into those plans and see what has been put together so far. So I suggest that people go to Mountaineer Station. If you're not used to going to Mountaineer Station, I assume that they have made provision there for people to park. But it is on the PRT, so anyway, it's definitely worth your time to attend. And then September ninth, at the Morgantown Public Library, from six to eight, there's an opening of an exhibit. It's going to travel around the state. And it's called Listening for Racial Understanding. And it, Eve Fokes, and she has a, she has a partner that's working on it too. And, pardon? Yes, Susan Eason. Am I going Susan Eason? All right, Susan Eason, sorry. So it was a project called Listening for Racial Understanding and it first had some discussions between people of different backgrounds, different races, different orientations, but it had primarily an initial discussion. And then, and then the people who were part of that discussion then were paired with an artist. And then they did, they pulled out of those conversations, which were taped, information and made some sort of artistic representation out of it. So I've not seen all of them. I've seen some, a couple of them. And they're very interesting. They'll have words and images and objects all in one, one piece or, or other, other types of artistic expression. So I happened to participate in one of the pairings and, and it was wonderful. I was paired with someone who happened to be from Charleston and we had a really interesting conversation. And part of the conversation centered on our grandmothers and the influence of our grandmothers and what we experienced at our grandmother's kitchen table, whether it be snapping beans or having conversation or whatever, whatever, whatever goes on around the kitchen table. So anyway, that's just one minor tiny piece of this whole big project. And I just wanted to mention it because I found the experience interesting and I'm looking forward to seeing all of the art pieces. And our library was very welcoming and willing to have this exhibit happen at the library. So anyone who is available and interested, please come. So it's this Friday night from six to eight. With respect to all of the different comments this evening, I really appreciate the legislators coming. I really appreciate all efforts towards working with the police department and the fire department toward resolution of the remaining issues between the city and those departments. And we do value the services of the police and fire department as we value all of our, all of our employees. And it is difficult when you're completely rewriting personnel manual and the, and the rules. And it's just, it's just going to take a little while to figure it all out. And hopefully we're right on the cusp of some breakthroughs because you can tell that there's a lot of frustration building, both on council's part, on legislators' part, on the administration's part, our, our police and fire department members. And, and these are the moments to sort it out and figure it out before tensions build further. I guess I have one other. The Evansdale Neighborhood Association has really cool picnics. And they often revolve around steel band. Because the person who chairs the organization is in a steel band, so steel drums. So, so at, on the eighteenth at two o'clock, they will be having their, their picnic. Trying to remember what form of the picnic. Maybe it's more focused on the steel band and less on the picnic, but, but they always have really great events. And they're also having an event to talk about a possible traffic plan in the Evansdale neighborhood. And they're also having an event to talk about a possible uh traffic plan in the Evansdale neighborhood. And it's at two o'clock on the eleventh. So so but that's, that's not, that's just within their neighborhood. And but it is interesting that there's a lot going on on the eleventh in the afternoon. So I appreciate everyone's comments.
Evansdale picnic's the eighteenth though, right? Not the eleventh?
Right. The eighteenth, eighteenth at two o'clock. We'll just ignore anything on the eleventh.
I never went to the Evansdale one. I'm excited for it. Putting it on my-
In the street. I'm trying to remember which street it is. It's, it's not a very large neighborhood. It's right dead center, and I would be glad to send you all some information. They pretty much, they're they're kind of shy. They kind of keep to themselves. I will tell you, I will tell you when it is because it is, it is very fun. And um uh they're just a, they're a, they're a creative group. So I'll send you more-
Is Penny still in charge over there?
Yeah, Penny's still in charge. It's actually right in front of her house, but um but that doesn't really help. So I'll 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 give you some street, some street coordinates. And that's all that I have. So now we are on to some executive sessions.
All right. It's gonna be a long one here. I move that pursuant to West Virginia State Code section six dash nine A four B nine to discuss matters protected by the attorney-client privilege or potential litigation and West Virginia State Code six dash nine A four B two A to discuss personnel matters. And pursuant to West Virginia State Code section six dash nine A four two nine to discuss acquisition or development of real estate in the sixth ward, that we move into executive session. Second.
All right. On favor, here we go.